All right, so now being 5:45, I'll call the April 24th meeting of the Plempton Board of Selectmen to order. This meeting is being cable cast, but the minutes are always the official record of the meeting. So we've got Finance Committee with us tonight. We're going to be talking about, and the police chief, and Rob for Lot from Highway, to talk about the proposed budget, the annual town meeting, and the special town meeting, warrant articles, and expecting votes of recommendation or not recommending, depending on the case. So, do you want to take it away, Liz?
Sure. So, some of them are just the regular customary ones. So Article 2, do you want to vote that one? Do you want to take some in a group? It's probably easier than doing individual votes.
And Finance Committee, you guys have already voted on these?
They don't vote number 2 typically. And then number 3 is the standard wage and personnel chart. Do you want to vote 2 and 3 together first?
Have they voted either one?
They don't vote these two.
They don't vote these, okay.
All right, so I'll make a motion that the selectmen recommend Articles 2 and 3 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then 4 is the budget, so we said we'd come back to that.
Yep, we'll come back to the budget.
5 is the standard one to pay for our financial audits. Did FinCom already vote number 5?
Yeah, we voted.
Favorable?
Favorable.
Okay. Do you want to take a vote on 5?
Sure.
All right, I'll make a motion that the selectmen recommend Article 5 is printed in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Article 6 is for the new lease agreement for the police vehicle. FinCom, did you vote 6?
Yes, we voted in favor unanimously.
Okay.
All right, and this is just the article that the chief puts on there every year?
Correct.
Okay. I did miss your really good description of how you were able to sell them out to, I'll have to watch that on your presentation to Finance Committee, because I think you talked about how you were able to make money on the old vehicles as well.
Yes, yeah, so that was a good little thing that we kind of did, especially where a lot of long streets here, and we have a lot of officers that utilize the cruisers. So basically utilizing them to, for all utilities in town, or whatever, kind of worked out well for us to sub those cruisers out and bring some money back into the department. So it worked out well.
Great, very good. All right, I'll make a motion, the selectmen recommend Article 6 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 7, I think FinCom had been holding, and this is for the school resource officer. Did you take a vote yet?
We have not voted on that yet.
Okay. Do you want to take your vote first, or do you have any questions for the chief?
I don't think I have any questions. Do you have any questions, anybody, for that resource officer for the Denit? No? Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, see unanimous. Chief, I think I've got a question on that. Just basically looking for a little bit more information. So, is this going to be like a full-time position? Will the individual be armed?
Yes, so I've always thought of the Denit, that's our biggest vulnerability in town. And I never anticipated the ability to have an officer, full uniformed officer down there. But yes, it would be full uniform position, full carry, it's essentially just an extension of us here, but just down at the Denit. So I've had extensive conversations with a lot of like members and families in town, as well as Peter Venuto, and members of the school district. And I have such a big push, and there's a lot of push nationwide, too. Unfortunately, it's sad to say, but there's a lot of integration into elementary schools now, and very close in proximity to local municipalities are doing a very similar thing. So when this was put on my plate, and we've been having some conversations about this over the last month, two months or so, when I saw the light in the tunnel that this could be afforded to us, I was very excited for it. And, you know, talking to Peter, talking to, you know, Dana Smith is down at the school on Tuesdays now, and integrating more officers down there for a full-time position, what type of programming can we, you know, account for down there? You know, there's Rad Kids, there's Dare America, there's a lot of different outlets and programs we can do, other than just what we've done historically. There's a lot of new data out there, there's a lot of new programs that we can do. So I'm excited for it, I really truly am. It's been, it's exciting to see, and in a way that it's not exciting to have that, but it's exciting that we're going to have that available to the Denit. I know Peter Venuto's been very excited to hear that this is going to be something that, you know, could be afforded to them.
Go ahead, Marilyn, you've got a question?
I think, my particular opinion on this is that we already have a police officer taking care of the middle school, so we certainly, you know, need to take care of the elementary school as well.
Right. What are you going to do in the summer, when the school is closed?
Yeah, so we've got a lot of like standard policies from surrounding departments. So what a lot of departments do is they'll integrate back into like a police role, like a patrolman's role, depending on where their rank and they are in the structure of the department. So let's say vacation time, school vacation times, or like the summer months, they'll integrate back into a patrol position. So they'll come right back in, start working patrol shifts, which will, you know, help, you know, again benefit patrol things. We're still working on, obviously, we're in the middle of grants and traffic enforcement grants and things like that, where we could always utilize another officer. We have still continuous complaints on traffic. So there's other ways that we can utilize this officer outside of the Denit Elementary when school's not in session. So it really is double edged, so it's huge for us, absolutely huge.
I'm okay. So have you heard any negative opinions about this?
I think you're always going to hear that, like the perception of a police officer in school, and like negative connotation around that. And again, it's not, I don't take it as like, this is exciting, we get to have a police officer in school. It's sad that we have a police officer in school. I never grew up at a police officer school. I was one of the first DARE students to go through DARE program back in 1992, I think is when it came into my town. So, and again, it wasn't geared towards what it is now, in learning about different traits of people, it was more in regards to like drug abuse, alcohol abuse, but there's so many more facets to like teaching kids and having that interaction at a young age. So you get both sides of it, but I think the push for the, this town, what I hear is, we want it, we love it, what can we do to get somebody down there? And that's just what I hear, you know, but I think you're always going to get some people. You might get teachers, too, that are like, I don't want a police officer down there. And I think you're going to get that anywhere. But I think what we do really well, and I'm really putting that on my staff over there, is community engagement. We're so good at it, we really truly care. So us going down there isn't a militant type of position, it's there to have that interaction, that positive reinforcement that we're here and a member of your community, we are you guys here. So we're like that first line of communication with the police department. So we have those, we create that bridge right there at a young age with a lot of the residents here in town. So I love that opportunity.
Yeah, I appreciate that opportunity, I actually really appreciate the potential with the right person in that position, a teaching opportunity particularly for the students. So I'm not totally thrilled with the whole idea or that it's necessary, but I get what the potential is there, and I hope we really can take advantage of it.
Right.
Did this come out as a citizens petition, or did you put it forth on your own?
So no, I had parents that came forth that were asking about like, could this ever be, you know, and then other people in town started talking about it, then it eventually came into my office, more on the regular. So, but yeah, parents were really pushing, and then Peter was having conversations, and we have the monthly school safety meetings down at the Denit, and we have these conversations about how do we, you know, safeguard the school, and you know, how we create all these action plans and for potential active shooter situations, and what do we do? Protect the class, we bring in more officers. And so these conversations have been going on, I think, geez, since I stepped into this role. So this has been an ongoing thing, so, and here we are now, so.
Sad, but it's today's world.
Right, right, right. And to Mark's question, to go back on that, I mean, this is, this might not just be one officer, this might be getting a couple officers trained so that we can augment, so let's just say Officer Smith needs to take a sabbatical or leave, or whatever it might be, now we have another person that could step right in. So that role is always fulfilled. And depending on, you know, how things, you know, fall out, so, or staffing situations, we'll always be able to have backfill, and always have a person that can fulfill that role, so.
So, Chief, you would see it not really as an assigned role for one person, but you could have multiple people that are like working through this position on a regular basis?
The hard part is, is like the officer that we have down there right now currently is a part-time officer, and with just with the like bridge standard and police reform, we're only going to see him for another year. So really, getting somebody trained and acclimated now, it's the most paramount time to do it, because there's a lot of onboarding and understanding of these programs and things that they have to be brought up to speed with, and state law and everything. So it's going to be a little bit of a learning curve in bringing somebody in, but then also, too, down the road, you might have a full-time school resource officer, but doesn't mean that the only person that can be trained is a school resource officer. So that if some reason we had attrition, or somebody moved on, different department or whatever, we have somebody that can slide right back into that role. So there's never going to be a lag time. I always want to make sure that we're safeguarding that school.
And security is first and foremost, and everything else is just kind of fluff, and is that really why we're doing this is more for security of the building? And then all the, you know, building relationships with the kids, and all the great positive programs, that's really just kind of like a bonus?
I don't know where I put that, to be honest with you. I don't know where I put that on the level. I think it's pretty close to the same, and it's, unfortunately, you look around the country and you see, we started off at Sandy Hook, and you know, Alvalde, and all these different schools, and it's so sad to see. And you never want to say it's ever, it's not going to be, it's not going to be our town, it's not going to be our town. You don't want to be so aloof to say that can't happen here. So like, yes, security is at the foremost, but you also, again, the whole militant end of it, and the whole like, you want to have a positive experience with these kids when they come in, and having the right attitude, and the right communication, the High Five Fridays, and the events and the things that we do down there, that it's not, it's not a scary police officer, it's a there, it's someone that's there that cares, and we're doing all these programs and these outlets to engage with you and community relations and things like that. So it's not like it's a huge disparity, it's not too far off from each other, quite honestly.
Okay, all right. Do you have any more questions? Okay, all right. I'll make a motion that if you're both okay with it, that the Board of Selectmen support Article 7 as submitted in warrant. All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You should have spent some time to talk to us about it.
Much appreciated.
Good presentation, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Quite convincing.
Do you want to take 8 and 9 together?
Yeah, beautiful.
It's the normal Chapter 90, and then the 200,000 for road construction. Did FinCom, did you vote favorably on 9?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And Rob, you've got a plan for these roads? You've got our roads in mind already? I'm sure there's no shortage of roads that need to be addressed. All right, so I'll make a motion that we recommend Articles 8 and 9 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
10 is for the Ventrac type machine for highway. Rob was here to discuss, and I think FinCom had put a hold on that one.
All right. Rob, did you want to give a little presentation about this machine and its capabilities?
Sure. Overall, with the highway department's kind of grown a little bit, we now have to maintain parks, and it comes with like, has multiple attachments, I don't know if you saw any of the, have you guys seen any of the?
No.
I looked it up.
You looked it up?
Mm-hmm.
Here is the price quotes that I have, wanted to scroll through, we can, it has a flail mower that goes in the front of it, which would be good in like the parks for like the walking paths, because the brush hog we have now, flail mower is far too big to go out there. It'll allow us to snow blow the sidewalks in the winter time, which we don't currently do. We currently use a pickup truck and just drive up on the sidewalk and plow it off, and then we have to take two other trucks to plow it across the road, which is kind of dangerous and time-consuming and costly to the town. That you can put one person during the day, and they can just go about it on their normal daily route in the winter time. Comes with a sidewalk room, we don't own a sidewalk sweeper, we borrow Halifax's when we're so fortunate to. So we'll be able to sweep sidewalks, too, as well as snow blow them. Comes with a 95-inch field mower, which is good for the athletic fields of the school and Harry Park. The machine we have now that's attached to it, the mower deck itself is from, I think, 1997, whatever year the field was built, that was when that mower deck was bought. And the machine running it off of now is a 2007, we're like $3,000, $3,500 on it, so it's starting to get tired. So this will help fill in with that, with the extra staffing that we have now, the four people. You can do a lot more, and it'd be nice to be able to utilize everyone in the department. Not that we don't want to utilize them, but it'd be nice to be able to do other things that other towns do that we currently can't, and this machine would allow us to do that. There's a fertilizer spreader for the back of it, too, which we don't own one, we borrow one from Rick Burnett, which is very nice of him to let us use it, but this is also tired. And the last time we used it, we had to do some repairs to it before we could even use it. So it'd cover a lot of bases for the town of stuff that we either borrow or don't have in general.
I will say, the Town Properties, you came before us, and...
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. That was the other thing, there was a ballpark renovator and stuff to do, like the infield and the baseball fields. That's all done by volunteers, and right now, and the Highway Department could assume that role and make it part of a routine maintenance to help keep our fields looking better.
The Town Properties Committee was supportive of what Rob is coming forth with.
And I believe, for several years, Halifax's machine was down, so we weren't able to borrow it to do the sidewalks, and obviously, they're going to get priority over us.
Quite often, it's like every other year we get to use it, if we're lucky. The original machine that they had was a Trackless, that was like a $100,000 machine that they bought way back in the early 90s. That machine just finally wore out, and they have it on the front of a whacker now. Now machines, they use it, it's got hours, so it's not dependable to borrow.
Rob, just a question for you, quickly on this. So was this the only quote that you guys got for?
It's on the state bid, there's only one price across the board for us.
It's the only one, okay.
Yeah, I do actually have another quote from, I think, Northrop equipment.
Yep.
Same pricing.
Yeah, okay. So it looks like the pricing here is $62,974, is that without some of the attachments?
Yes, possibly. I think if you keep flipping through the pages, you might have handed you the wrong one, I have a ton of stuff here.
Yeah. Well, it looks like then it starts going through the accessory.
Yes, and I think if you follow in on that, there's another paper with the prices of other attachments, because I had gotten a price on some other attachments, separate. I believe that was the ball field.
Yep.
One.
Oh yeah, okay, and that comes down, so you're trying to get all of the attachments with it that you can?
It would be nice to get it all in one shot, and then you don't have to keep revisiting this, and if you guys feel we should, I'm okay with that.
Have you had any experience with this particular machine?
No, not with this particular machine. I think it's Carver or Middleboro, one of the towns is getting that, there's a few other towns around with them that have them, and they tend to like them.
Yeah.
It's not as big as a Trackless, which is a much nicer machine, but you don't need that big of a machine, that's like half the size, and it could work pretty well for our needs in town.
Yeah, the only thing I was really kind of surprised on with a piece of equipment of this nature, it just seemed like a very short warranty on it.
Yeah.
But that's kind of standard across the field.
You've usually seen 5, sometimes 6?
It's only two years.
Just depending? I don't know with that specific manufacturer, but that just seemed a little surprising.
Yeah.
Because of how, you know, how much abuse that they take.
Yeah.
Does any kind of a maintenance plan come with it, or no?
We do all maintenance in-house.
All maintenance in-house?
On all of our equipment, we do all the maintenance, unless it's something, you know, we're not really outfitted to handle.
Right.
But 99% of our things are done in-house.
Yep, got it.
Where's the machine from, Rob? Where's it made?
Who makes it?
Yeah.
Ventrac.
Are they local?
They're in Ohio.
Yeah.
I believe so.
They've been around for a long time, they actually share the same attachment hookup, I guess you could say, as a Jacobson. So there are other machines that could go to this attachment if you really wanted to, but I wouldn't want to go to the Jacobson. They're great municipal maintenance things, they use a lot of like golf courses and stuff like that, because they're so versatile for what they do.
Yeah, they're owned by Toro, is the parent company, they bought them, I think, two years ago.
Yeah. You did some research on it, though.
I did, I did start reading through it, yeah.
It's a pretty neat machine for what it does.
No, I was actually not, having known this brand, I was pleasantly surprised by some of the reviews on it. It does seem to be...
It is a pretty good machine.
Strong and pretty versatile. Usually, my primary concern with anything, any type of equipment, when you buy something that's a multipurpose machine with 8 million different attachments, is that it never does anything well.
Yeah.
And everything breaks. That doesn't seem to be what the reviews were saying.
It seems to be one of those gimmicky machines, it's not like, it's a well-built machine, it articulates and stuff. If you look at it, it's like a little tractor.
Right.
It's not like a, you know, homeowner-to-grade machine, it's pretty nice.
I think we're spending an awful lot of money this year, and I think this might be a very nice thing to have, but I don't think that this is the year to do it. That's my opinion, I don't know, do we want to have any further discussion on this?
Yeah, I mean, I do agree with Marilyn as far as just the timing of it, and I appreciate Rob's commentary on it, and I do think it's something that seems like it would be nice for the Highway Department to have. I honestly, just not being educated about what the Highway Department has and doesn't have, didn't know how many things that it seems like you guys...
We don't have.
Or without. So it seems like a pill that at some point we're going to have to swallow, but just not something I was expecting.
If it's easier, I could break it up, attachments, you know, basic machine with certain attachments this year, and follow through next year with other attachments, if that's more feasible. Ideally, you'd like to get it all in one shot, just to get it out of the way.
And didn't we see that there was a financing option?
Yep, you can...
Lease pressures?
Yeah, lease pressures, four-year payments, or four-annual payments, I should say.
And is it interest-free, or is there a penalty for doing it?
I believe it's interest-free, I don't have that exact...
I don't know why we wouldn't do that route, then. Yeah, $90,000 is a lot, particularly this year.
I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if there was a way to spread the payments, and it's interest-free, and we could, you know, and the Highway Department gets what they need, and that gives the town a little bit more leverage, that's something that would be more palatable to me.
Well, it might extend the warranty, too, if you haven't completely paid for it.
True.
Certainly might.
Wait a second, we still owe money on it.
Yeah, too, it is a 10-year purchase. Most of our tractors and all that stuff, small dump trucks are 10 years. Our big dump trucks, our loaders, that's a 25-year purchase, our lawn mowers are anywhere from five to 10, depending on how long they live. I don't look to replace this machine for at least 10 years. So I don't know if that helps with some of the numbers.
I haven't seen any of its samples, you can't go borrow one there.
Yeah.
So would you rather hold off on making a recommendation, and let Rob go back and see if he can get a finance option?
I know there is a finance option, I don't have the exact details of it, but I can have that within 40 hours if that happens.
Didn't you, didn't you already see that?
That'd be helpful.
I can check my email, I thought you already sent it.
I sent it to you, but I don't think it had like the interest rates or anything on it, it was just a full paper.
No, it was just a flat figure, yeah.
But I can get you all of the detailed information.
Yeah, I'd rather hold off, then.
Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate seeing that.
Yeah, so we're not going to vote on that one.
All right, so you guys are going to hold off on that. How do you feel? I'm ready, where I feel like I could make a recommendation.
Well, I'm for it, but I feel like the Finance Committee's got to do their work, and I wouldn't feel uncomfortable waiting for them.
No, I wouldn't feel uncomfortable waiting for them either, and it sounds like, but I support what Rob's trying to do, but I absolutely agree with the financing segment of it. If that's the way we can pull this off, that would be awesome.
Full-fee plan.
Yeah, especially if there's no interest, that seems like a no-brainer.
All right, we'll have all that information to you in 48 hours, just help.
All right, so how would that work? Because...
We'd have to amend it on the floor.
But we'd also not have a recommendation?
Right, so we'll just print 00, like a no vote?
Well, I'm ready to recommend it.
We could recommend it, and, you know, come back on the floor, and if things change...
And say, we're going to be financing it instead.
I don't want to recommend $90,000 to the article.
There's a need.
Yeah, I'm for it. And again, we sat at the Town Properties and went over this and felt the same way.
I think it's a nice addition, that's a big hunk of money in one year. If we're spreading this out over three or four years, I'm much more interested in supporting this. So not quite sure of the logistics, I think we could vote yes, knowing amongst ourselves that we were going to strongly support an amendment.
If we're going to wait for more information.
Okay, all right.
So you want to take a vote?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that the selectmen support Article 10 with the hopes that Rob is able to come back with a lease-to-own amendment to this article for town meeting and for the Finance Committee.
Absolutely, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I keep wanting to say roll call vote.
Excuse me, Christine?
So FinCom will be listed as 00?
They'll be listed as 00.
Can I get a copy of the warrant?
I don't have any printed, it's up on the screen, but I can email it to you.
You want to come over here?
I can give you...
Yeah, I can forward you a new one.
You can come over here.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Is it okay if we do, let's see, 11, 12, 13, 14? A lot of these are all similar.
Why don't we do 11, 12, and then take CPC as a separate?
Yeah, let's do that. Okay, so 11 is the standard lease payments.
Okay, so those are the standard for, that Rob puts in every year for equipment that we already own?
Yeah, it's the, I think it might be the third-year payment, or, no, I'm sorry, it's the second-year payment on the highway truck, and the third-year payment, I believe, on the fiber optic. And then, so that's just 11. And then, John, you want to do the CPC stuff separate?
Yeah, I think they're taken as a group.
Okay, so let's just vote 11, then.
Are you okay with...
Yeah, we already voted in favor of it.
All right, I'll make a motion, the selectmen recommend Article 11 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then 12 and 13, FinCom does not vote on, and these are the standard, well, one is the regular CPC article, and then the other is to transfer the, from the undesignated fund balance for land acquisition. And that one has been fully vetted by Town Council.
I'm okay with both of them.
And that was just what, adding, oh, these aren't going to work, adding money to the article?
It's taking from undesigned funds and making it available for acquisition of land. And it's specifically for costs for like transfer, land donation. There's a lot of work that comes with that, like surveying, wetlands delineation.
Basically just moving from one plot to the other. It's not raising appropriate-
Well, and it helps speed up the process, too, if they find a parcel of land instead of having to wait for town meeting.
Then they can act on it.
Right, they can see if it's feasible. Okay, so are we all okay with Articles twelve and thirteen?
Twelve and thirteen.
Okay, I'll make a motion. The Selectmen recommend Article twelve and thirteen is printed in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, fourteen, fifteen are the standard Board of Assessors ones for their valuation work. And FinCom voted for those already.
So fiscal year 2024 and then three thousand dollars. Then I have to put on my glasses. Thanks, John. Okay, all right. So no issues with fourteen or fifteen? You're both good with that?
Oh, good.
Okay, I'll make a motion that the Selectmen recommend Article fourteen and fifteen is printed in the warrant. All in favor?
Aye.
And did we have a second?
I'm sorry, I think I had a second.
Okay.
Maybe I did. Nice second.
Sixteen and-
It was implied.
It was implied.
Sixteen and seventeen are for pilot agreements that the Board of Assessors has been working on.
What was eighteen?
And these have been vetted by our Solar Council.
Okay, so that's the Upland Road, and then the other one is Ring Road?
Yes.
Is that the school one?
I don't know.
Um, no.
We never talked about it.
Yes.
Okay.
So we need a little more information on that one.
Questions or concerns on those?
No.
Okay.
No, go ahead.
Okay.
We never discussed this, an opioid settlement stabilization fund.
Sixteen and seventeen is printed in the warrant.
Second.
Neither do I.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll see what they say. Who's it from?
Eighteen is for the opioid settlement. Basically, the money that we get in now, there's no real legal mechanism to have access to it. So Town Council is suggesting that all of the communities participating in the settlement adopt this language so that the money can eventually be accessed.
Was it like a revolving account, something like that?
Very similar.
In effect, there's no money effect at this point.
There is money that the town has already taken in for this, but right now it's just sitting in, it kind of doesn't have a home, so to speak.
Okay. FinCom already recommended this?
No, we didn't, because we didn't know anything about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So we take in money. We're part of a nationwide settlement agreement. Most of the cities and towns in the Commonwealth are, but right now there's no legal mechanism to access the funds. So Council is having all of their member communities adopt this language so that then the money will eventually make it to this, basically, it's like a stabilization fund, and it can only be used for very specific purposes in relation to like preventing drug abuse and things like that.
And the money has come in?
We've already received money.
Are we going to be raising money for that fund?
No.
No.
No, it's just money that we get paid by large pharmaceutical companies as part of this nationwide settlement. So no town money is involved.
Can this be used towards the DF program?
We think it might be able to. We looked at a very preliminary list of potential uses for it, and that was like the main one that we could identify that seemed applicable.
Steve, we're going to have to vote on this article, on eighteen.
I'm all.
You guys, you're like, you're ready to take a vote on it?
Yes, I think we're ready to take a vote on eighteen. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, okay.
Questions or concerns on eighteen?
No concerns.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion. The Selectmen recommend Article eighteen is printed in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nineteen is to make changes to the Groundwater Protection District, and Planning Board won't be holding their hearing on this, I don't think, for a couple weeks. But it was put forth by Bylaw Review Committee and the Planning Board. Typically, you vote on the bylaw ones.
I did sit with Alan Wheelock twice to go through this because I tried reading it and I was totally lost. And he convinced me that, in effect, it's straightening out some of the inconsistencies we have, and that it's going to also be integrated with our earth removal bylaw so that there's nothing that conflates. After spending some time, I feel very comfortable voting it.
I read it, too, and reading it in preparation for the earth removal, I was concerned that there were, it wasn't really consistent, and I felt like it needed to be, there were areas of it that really needed to be tougher, that they've addressed in this go-around. So I liked what they came up with for this revision of the groundwater protection bylaw. Did you get a chance to read it, Mark?
I would say I've skimmed it and I'm comfortable with it.
Okay, all right. Seems like we're all supportive of this, so I'll make a motion. The Selectmen recommend the article, what is it, nineteen?
Nineteen.
Nineteen as printed in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then twenty is to amend the definitions section of the bylaws. So that's pretty straightforward.
I like that, too, a lot. All right, any questions or concerns about twenty, tightening up the definitions?
Very much well-needed one. Glad it's there.
Yeah, me, too. All right, so I'll make a motion. The Selectmen recommend Article twenty is printed in the warrant.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Twenty-one and twenty-two, FinCom already voted, and these are to replenish the two fire department articles that we see every year for the breathing apparatus and the personal protective equipment.
Except for you. All right, any questions or concerns on those?
No, glad we're spread them out and working on it on a continual basis.
You're okay with?
We voted, yeah, in favor of it.
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion. The Selectmen recommend Article twenty-one and Article twenty-two as submitted in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, I think FinCom was holding twenty-three and twenty-four. On the special, the Fire Department wants to repurpose any funds left in the Engine One refurbishment article to make it available for anything. So I think the Finance Committee's standpoint was, well, could those funds, would there be enough left over in there to address these? There may be. I spoke with John Cherstedt from the Fire Department today, but that project on Engine One isn't finished yet, so we won't know. So I'm wondering if we should just keep these on the warrant, but maybe you don't vote, and then at town meeting, we may be able to pass over them if there's enough money left in the account for the other project.
Makes sense.
You're comfortable with that?
Yeah, I like that.
One can come okay with that?
All right, so we'll do no vote on twenty-three and twenty-four.
All right, so should I make a motion that we recommend, we do not recommend it at this time, or?
I would just say, let's just not, not vote it.
Take a vote.
Yeah, and I'll just put zero-zero.
Okay.
I'll go back and do that.
So we'll list that as no vote taken, is that?
Well, it'll be zero-zero, similar to how the FinCom vote shows up on the one for Rob's machine.
So should we take a vote, though, saying we're not-
Maybe to pass over- To not make a recommendation.
To not make a recommendation, right.
Sure.
So we'll be in favor of not taking-
Yes, yes, exactly. All right, so I'll make a motion. The Selectmen vote to not make a recommendation on Articles twenty-three and twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Twenty-five is to replenish our general consultant and design services article. This was one that was put forth by Town Properties a couple years ago, and it just makes it so that we have funds available to us when, say, for example, we find out that the library doesn't have a leaching field, we're able to get an engineer involved right away to work on things like that. So this will bring it back up to around, I believe, twelve thousand dollars will be in it. At that point, it'll replenish it back up to that standard amount.
Is this the article that we were going to use to address if anything happened in Carver with-
No, that money's still sitting there.
Okay, okay. All right, it makes sense to me. Do you have any questions or concerns on it?
No.
All right, I'll make a motion. The Selectmen recommend Article, did Finance Committee recommend this?
They did not.
We have not voted on that article. Is there money, is there money in the account now?
Yes. I believe if we get the nine thousand, it'll bring it back up to around twelve thousand and change, so like twelve or thirteen thousand. We've been using it steadily for all the problems that we've been having at all of the town buildings.
I guess it's just the terminology, general consultant preliminary design article. It was just a little bit vague, so we hadn't voted.
So that was the name of the article back like a couple years ago when it was originally proposed, so that's why Council has us keep the same name, but it's really for consulting and engineering services every time something goes wrong here.
Okay. You want to vote on it?
Are you comfortable with it?
Um, I think so.
Okay. Then I'll make, I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, I'll make a motion. The Selectmen recommend Article twenty-five as printed in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-six is, and I'm just looking, you, okay, you guys voted that one.
Yes.
Twenty-six is for the replacement of the roof on the front portion of this building. And the reason, part of the reason why it's so high, it does include everything. It's all-inclusive of all the design services, but it's also for the hazardous materials mitigation because that part of the building is so old. So that will finish it completely.
Yeah, John said that's what gutters and fascia-
It's everything. It's all the drainage.
Okay. Questions or concerns?
No concern.
All right, I'll make a motion. The Selectmen recommend Article twenty-six is printed in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will say, we don't expect it to come in quite that high, but we don't know.
Just looking here. So FinCom voted through thirty-three.
Okay.
So maybe you can do some of these as a group.
Okay.
So twenty-seven is for continued interior building improvements and flooring projects at the library to continue what we've already started. Twenty-eight is for installation of alarm systems at the Highway Barn. Last year, we funded for library and highway, but they had a lot of issues at the library, so we used all the money on that. Twenty-nine is to add fifteen thousand to our IT and equipment article so that we can continue with our software and hardware updates. And it's also incorporate some funds in case we need something for potentially going to a hybrid meeting option in the future. Do you want to just do those and then-
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. And FinCom has recommended all these articles?
Yes.
All right, so this is twenty-
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine. And twenty-nine.
All right, I'll make a motion. The Selectmen recommend Article twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine is printed in the warrant.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thirty is to do Phase One of book replacement at the library. This one's specific to the children's nonfiction collection. Mike Slosson also wants to replace the adult nonfiction collection, but the total cost for the entire project is around a hundred and fifty thousand. And after looking at all of the town finances and also how long it will take him to actually re-catalog all the new books, he thought that twenty-five thousand to get him started would be good. In the children's collection specifically, some of the books are like not factual any longer, like the data is outdated.
They're old.
Yeah, it's old.
So am I.
Yeah, me, too.
So did Finance Committee recommend Article thirty?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any questions or concerns on thirty?
No, I appreciate spreading it out over time and making that a yearly thing.
Yeah, truly a project.
It is.
I'll make a motion. The Selectmen recommend Article, what is that?
Thirty.
Thirty?
Yep.
As printed in the warrant.
I'm sorry, second.
That's all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, we can do probably thirty-one through thirty-three together. Thirty-one is for the Recreation Committee so that they have the funds available since they need to do most of their work in the spring. We're always like off a season in terms of town meeting funding, so this will actually be used to get them up and running next spring. And this spring, they're using the Recreation Airmark that was put in the state budget for them. So this will bring them up to date for next year. So there's that one. And then thirty-two is to replace the flooring in three classrooms at Denne.
Which one?
And thirty-three is for the town clerk's bylaw codification subscription.
Why did we hold thirty-four? Did Finance Committee recommend these articles?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
I'm fine with it.
Any questions or concerns on this?
No concerns. Glad the record is up and moving and funded, or potentially funded.
All right, I'll make a motion. The Selectmen recommend Article thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three as printed in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So thirty-four is for an HVAC unit at Silver Lake, but we're thinking that we might be able to use ARPA funds for that. So I don't know if you want to hold or take a vote not to do anything with it, and then we think we can probably just pass over. That's the plan.
It says our transfer from available funds, so.
But ARPA is not a town meeting funding source, so we would just do that separately. We'd pass over it at town meeting and just use the ARPA funds.
All right.
From the county.
Yeah.
So, and we should know by town meeting?
We'll know.
Okay, whether the ARPA funds will be available? Okay. All right, did Finance Committee make a recommendation?
We did not vote on that.
We held. We held on.
All right. Do you feel comfortable taking the same action, holding off until town meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I'll let you guys take your non-vote first.
Right. So I'll make a motion that we don't recommend this.
We haven't already.
I know.
But go ahead.
Okay. Or whatever the wording needs to be, that we are not voting on it now.
Vote to make no recommendation.
Yeah, to vote that. Thank you for the language.
Mm-hmm.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor of holding Article thirty-four?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
All right, I'll make a motion. The Selectmen vote to not make a recommendation on Article thirty-four as printed in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thirty-five is for the Silver Lake Middle School for our portion of the cost for the resource officer. Finance already voted.
You already voted it? Okay.
Do it every year now.
All right, I'll make a motion. The Selectmen support Article or recommend Article thirty-five as printed in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then thirty-six, this is to clean up language that we had approved at a prior town meeting. Council had an issue with the way something was worded, so this fixes that. It was from one of the articles on the special that authorizes the treasurer to do the tax title agreements.
All right, so Finance Committee's not going to make a recommendation because it's not a money article. All right, are you okay with this one, too?
I am.
All right, I'll make a motion. The Selectmen recommend Article thirty-six is printed in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that's it for the annual.
Okay, great. And you're running again? Your name's on the ballot?
Oh, is it on the ballot?
Is it?
Well, yes, it is.
Okay, all right. So do you want to go to the budget now?
Sure. So this is the Finance Committee voted budget.
What, the green?
The green.
Okay.
They are recommending every item as requested. There was one, let me find it here. The Highway Department Administrative Assistant had put in for a sixteen-point-seven percent increase, and Finance Committee was recommending the five percent increase that was recommended for all of the wage and personnel employees. Last year, when we did the salary adjustments for the wage and personnel employees, the Highway Superintendent, his administrative assistant did get a large increase, but it was for an increase in hours. She was not moved to the top of the range for her position, so that's why she was seeking the increase this year. It would move her to the top of the range.
Okay, so it's, yeah, still in the range for the position. It's just moved- Okay, so it's still in the range for the position. It's just moved her to the top.
It would be moving her to the very top.
How long has Colleen been doing the job, Rob?
Sixteen years.
How much?
No, 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 no.
Colleen?
Highway?
Yeah.
Sixteen years?
She started there before here.
I didn't know that. Interesting.
I put her in for it. I think she's worth it. She comes in on her days off to meet people for stickers. She works far more hours than she's paid for. She's a good employee. I think it's only like a two thousand dollar difference per year. She's got a lot of experience, and she goes above and beyond.
I don't know if I'll recommending, but Finance Committee is recommending.
So the Finance will have the main motion at town meeting, so this would like need to be an amended.
So someone would have to hold this line.
Someone would have to put a hold on her line.
Okay. Which would probably be Rob.
Unless Finance, but I think that they felt strongly, correct me if I'm wrong, that because it's you wanted to keep it uniform for all the wage and personnel employees. So they would need to do an alternate motion if they wanted to, to try that at town meeting.
Okay. So that's what you'll do then? Does that make sense? Okay. All right, so there's really nothing for us to do. It's just enough.
Not really.
Okay, okay, okay.
I mean, unless you had any specific questions, but you've seen the budget.
No.
So the requested and the recommended are pretty much in agreement throughout?
Pretty much.
Agreement throughout.
So can we just highlight the ones that?
You can just do one. Yeah, it was only, it was only the Highway Administrative Assistant that's not.
There's nothing else in the budget that's? Wow.
We did a good job this year, John.
Yeah, well done. Well done. Teamwork. Okay. Great, so that's, that's the only discrepancy.
Yeah, so if you want to take a vote for Article Four, which is the budget, to recommend it.
Okay. Does the selectmen recommend the budget as printed in the warrant?
Printed, well, it's Article Four.
It's Article Four.
As noted in Article Four.
Okay. All right. So any questions or concerns about that?
No.
Okay. All right. So I make a motion. The selectmen recommend Article Four as printed in the warrant?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Can I just note that maybe that's a four-page document, and it's a year's worth of work on those people and Liz and an amazing.
Well, really, the department heads too.
Absolutely. So maybe the townwide effort, but then all encapsulated in four pages.
Right, exactly. And a lot of meetings to discuss and really at nauseam, probably.
It does feel like we've made a lot of progress in the town administrator and the Finance Committee integrating in and making this happen. So it's kind of pretty easy when we sit here.
It's a big help.
It's great. All right, so now we're on the special.
Now we're on the special. The first one is-
Before we start, Liz, do we know what's going to be moving between what departments?
Um, no.
We don't, okay. Because it's hard to know.
So most of these will be funded either from other funding sources or from free cash.
Okay, okay. And we're not doing that tonight?
No.
We're just voting the, okay.
Yeah, I think funding source to be identified.
Right.
Down the road.
Right.
And did Finance already vote on all of these?
They put a hold on-
We put a hold on several.
Eleven and twelve.
Okay.
Is that right?
And five.
Oh, and five. I'm sorry, you added that one.
All right, one, five, eleven, and twelve?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so do we want to jump into one and give explanation?
So this is for the old townhouse roof replacement. We already raised a hundred thousand at the special town meeting back in November. This is a really high estimate, but the project's out to bid right now. Bids come in Wednesday. So we can, you can amend down on the floor of town meeting, but you can't amend up. So just to be extra careful that we're able to complete the project, we were putting this in for one fifty.
We had a concern, a fair number of concerns about this, because the building basically is not being used. We know we have to, the roof is going to have to be maintained. But it's a lot of money for a building that you want to either find a way to use it, or sell it, or do something with it. I don't know what the plans are, but there should probably be some.
We've tried to, you know, the Town Properties Committee has wrestled with how do we put people in there.
Yeah.
It's used by a few of the organizations, the fitness class, the yoga, the mediation. But, you know, that's maybe four, five, six hours a week, and that's it. And we just haven't come up with a, an idea. We talked to council on aging, would that make sense? But they were only there a couple of days, and sometimes it's just the one clerk. Because the council isn't meeting there, you know, they meet once a month. So really, we're looking for town input. What should we be doing with this beautiful old building?
It is beautiful, yeah.
Well, one of the problems you note in that building is especially for the seniors. If you want to use that big upstairs room, it's, it's a climb.
It is, and it is.
And not all of them can just run up there.
You know, we put in the chair, I guess, quite a long time ago, but there's seniors who won't use it because of, they feel unbalanced.
Yeah.
You know, and it's.
So it's a lot of money to be spending, so I think something needs to be done with this building, some plans or something.
The roof does need to be fixed. I agree.
Roof needs to be fixed.
We, we do need to figure out a use of the building.
Right. So that's really why we put a hold on it. I mean, let's talk about this. What are we going to do about it? We don't have to talk about it tonight, but it's a concern.
It's definitely.
I hear that concern. On the other hand, unless we protect this building, it's going to be worth nothing, either to us or anyone else.
But we have to come up with a way to do something with this building instead of just pouring money into it.
I, I agree. You know, it's been there a long time, and we found uses in the past. Something's going to show up sooner or later. And I think you've put us on, on alert that we may to make it come up sooner to keep Finance Committee happy.
Well, and then another question that we just had, John Will Holmson was in here and did speak, you know, on behalf of the Town Properties Committee. But was this formally put out in a, in a request for proposal, or was there any?
There are. It's out for bids.
Yeah, it's out, it's out for bid right now.
So we, we've never seen anything, or, and I probably missed it then, and that's probably my fault, but that outlined what the requirements for to submit a bid and what the specifications were or anything.
So we use an online platform when we work with this particular architect. We use Bid Docs Online.
Okay.
But it is out right now.
Is it on the town website, or is it in a newspaper?
So they do all of that. We did put notice in the newspaper and notice on comp buys, and it went into the central register.
Okay.
But it just directs people to Bid Docs Online.
Right, right. Okay, I must have just missed it in the newspaper when it came out. But I'd just be interested to read through what the specs actually.
Sure, we can give you that.
I can send you a copy of the info.
One of the problems there is there's not much land with it. You know, you have a real parking problem. I mean, over time, Jack Doyle has been kind enough to let us use his field, but.
I think those days are, are gone.
So you're right, we need to noodle how to get, what are we going to do with this thing?
Does this building have historical value to the town?
It's built in eighteen fifty. It was the original town hall. Prior to the, prior to eighteen fifty, they met in the church.
It's beautiful.
Fascinating. So this is the first devoted town hall. And.
I just wonder if we could find a better use, like maybe even affordable housing apartments or something like that in the building? Because I just don't see this being a good use for seniors. But then you've got a lot of stuff in there that would have to be moved out.
Well, you could, you could work with that, but you'd have the same problem with affordable housing. You'd have to put in an elevator. And we looked at that way back when Kathy Lenatra came and said, you know, I'd like to work with you. And I said, fine, we need an elevator. And then we found out it was like two hundred and fifty thousand, and she was talking, you know, somewhere under a hundred thousand. That's why we have a ramp going up here. Because the earmark, we just couldn't put it forward to the old townhouse. We put it here.
So.
I always thought it'd make a great doctor's office, but, you know.
I guess we have to vote.
Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Article One.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
We approved it. Reluctantly, but we approved it.
I think that we-
I understand your reluctance.
Have our charge here, that we need to find something suitable for that building besides how it's being currently used. Because that really isn't a suitable use of the building.
I agree.
Okay, okay, all right. So I'll make a motion that the selectmen approve Article One as printed in the warrant. Or recommend Article One as printed in the warrant.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see. Two is the one that we see each year. It's just to replenish the town building maintenance emergency article. Finance already voted this one. And then Article Three is to add six thousand dollars to the unemployment line. And that's to cover some unanticipated unemployment costs since we're self-insured for unemployment. And then Article Four, I don't know if you want to do maybe just these three in a batch. Article Four is for ten thousand to OPEB.
And that's the traditional?
Yes.
All right, I would be curious as to in what century we will have that fully funded.
On the OPEB.
At these, yeah. Then I just wonder if it's even worth funding it.
I know.
I mean, it's a many millions of dollars, so.
Oh, I know, I know.
On the other hand, it is a gesture.
Yeah, it is a gesture, but.
And if nothing else, keeps it at least once a year that we think about it a little bit.
A little bit. All right, so I'll make a motion that the selectmen recommend Article Two, Article Three, and Article Four as printed in the warrant.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, FinCom had put the hold on. This was the one that we talked about, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to release your hold.
About it too.
So this is the one that they think they're going to have enough money left over in it that they could address the frame for engine two and the tires that were on the annual.
Okay.
So you took no vote on those, but they won't know the balance in this until closer to town meeting.
You're not necessarily against this. You just want to see the funding.
We did not vote at all on that.
Sure, okay.
So would you like to do, like you did the last, to not make a recommendation? And then we'll just hear maybe more about it at town meeting?
Yes. Would you agree? Yeah, that's fine. All in favor? You made a motion, right?
Sure.
Well, should I, should I not? Oh, you can't make the motion. Sorry.
I'll have to make the motion.
Steve make the motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, so the three of us all in favor?
Yeah, aye.
Okay, one abstain.
All right, I'll make a recommendation that the selectmen vote to not make a recommendation on Article Five in the special town meeting warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Six is for a new copier scanner for inspectional services.
Which is inspectional services, the building?
Like building, planning, conservation. It's like the whole upstairs.
I didn't know if we had.
And FinCom already voted this. We can probably group some of these.
And this is a straight-out purchase?
Yes.
This is not a lease?
Correct. Seven is for the remaining cost of the new generator for this building. And the rest of it is coming from the town building maintenance emergency article. So that's been ordered and should be here soon, hopefully. And then, let's see, Eight is for unpaid bills from a prior fiscal year. I think this number's going to come down a little bit. But we can amend down. We can't amend up, so.
Why don't we just vote those three?
Okay.
Want to just do those?
So no ARPA money for the generator?
So we can look at that, like taking a portion of it from ARPA, but I think we wanted to-
Have a bulk of the money squared away?
Yeah, and be able to use those funds on the well project.
Gotcha.
And then we have the other well issue.
Well, we've got so many balls in the air, it's really.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, so you're okay with those?
Yes.
Mark, and you're okay with those, John? Okay, so I'll make a motion. The selectmen recommend Article Seven.
Six.
What is it? Seven and Eight as printed in the warrant?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nine is to add funds to the management positions article, and this will cover Lance Benjamina's services on the fire chief position. And Finance voted this one.
You recommended this?
Yes.
All right. Any questions or concerns on this one?
No.
Okay. I'll make a motion. The selectmen recommend Article Nine as printed in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ten and eleven, FinCom held. They didn't vote these. One is to cover the fire chief's expected buyout.
We voted ten, and maybe I gave you the wrong.
Oh, you did. Okay, I'm sorry. That didn't get put on Lisa's list. She put hold.
Okay.
Okay, so ten is-
Okay, so ten you're okay with. So that's the fire chief, money to cover his buyout.
This is the sick time or vacation, whatever the buyout is? Okay. All right, any questions or concerns on that? All right, and this is, I believe, a contractual obligation of the boards. All right, so I'll make a motion. The selectmen recommend Article Ten as printed in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wait, no, I lied. I have it here. They voted to hold eleven and twelve.
Okay.
Print was really small. So eleven was to supplement the fire and EMS salaries line. We expect them to be over budget again this year. Right now, I think we're a little over seventy-five percent through the fiscal, and I think that they're about eighty-four percent spent. They are going to be getting a reimbursement though from a grant to cover some of John Scherstedt's time working on different projects, so that will help offset. But we weren't sure how over budget they would be. Historically, it's been, they've had a difficult time sticking to their budget. So, you know, we didn't want to leave it all for the reserve fund at the end, but.
Do you feel comfortable with that, having it potentially come out of the reserve fund?
Article Ten?
Eleven.
Eleven.
We were really looking for more information on a figure, but, which is why we didn't vote.
Sure.
Voted, but do you have any more idea?
I don't think it'll be much more than that, to be honest. I was happy to hear that they have grant funding coming in to cover some of his time. But I mean, they've been fully reimbursed for their time on Cisco. And we don't have anything really left from that COVID money. Like that, that bailed them out last year.
And there's no modifications they can make to finish up the year to stay within budget?
I think that they're in a time of transition, so I think that they're having some difficulties.
Okay.
You want to vote on it? Twenty thousand dollars?
Do you want me to vote on it or no?
No.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
All right, you make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Three.
So it can't be over twenty thousand. That's the most we can transfer to them.
Correct. The rest would need to come from reserve fund or from other lines.
Okay. But you're, you think that hopefully that will cover it, the twenty thousand?
I hope so.
Hope so, okay.
Catherine, did you abstain from when, at your last meeting, when for, on Article Ten for the fire chief?
She, I think she did. All of the fire department articles.
Sure that any fire ones are in there? Sure that any fire ones are in there as three zero? Before I send it to print.
I was on the department for 30 years, did I make a difference?
No.
No. We don't have any financial gain.
No.
Make Article.
Are, are you both okay with Article Eleven? Okay, all right, I'll make a motion, the selectmen recommend Article Eleven is printed in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then twelve is for all of the customary local school committee transfers, specifically for their special education budget. But we don't know yet. They think that they're going to be able possibly to fully fund this through other budget lines in the school budget, because they implemented a spending freeze. And they have money left over that they know about in the VOC Ed budget. But we won't know until closer to town meeting, so that's why it's written like this, Town Council helped us with this.
Okay.
I can put in the ending part, actually.
So do we want to wait till town meeting, is that?
I mean, you might want to, just because we think that the number for, that they're going to need is somewhere in the $60,000 range, but they think they can fully fund it through the existing. Through the existing school budget. So I don't know if you want to maybe do no vote.
I would feel more comfortable going into town meeting and finding out what the real numbers are.
I think that makes sense.
We did not vote on this one either.
Do you want to take a vote to not make a recommendation?
I'll make a motion to not do a recommendation now.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
I'll make a motion, the selectmen do not make a recommendation on Article Twelve in the special town meeting warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it?
Wow.
So I'll catch us to a printer at some point, like later tonight or tomorrow, and then if I put the signature page. I'm not sure how you want to work that. If I had to hook up to a printer now, you want me to print the signature pages like right now?
And she was going to talk to us, he texted her.
Or if you want to come in and sign at some point tomorrow?
Get easier on yourself, what do you want us to do?
Easier if we try to figure it out tonight.
No.
Maybe when you guys are finishing up. I'll run and get it.
Yeah, because all you need is the signature pages.
Yeah.
All right, so is that everything that we've got with Finance Committee?
Yes.
Great, well, thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Great job.
See you at town meeting, yeah, excellent job.
This isn't like the old days, Marilyn, when you and I were.
I know.
This is pretty good. Almost professional.
Yeah, isn't it nice?
Almost, yeah.
We've come a long way.
We're not with this anymore.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You too. All right, so next item on our agenda is the MBTA.
Everything, everything in my report was one number off, because I didn't have number seven.
Why don't we take a minute?
That's why.
While everybody clears out.
Yeah.
Rearrange the numbers.
You want to take a two minute break? All right, John, is this thing?
I didn't have number seven.
John, we're going to take a two minute break?
Aye.
All right, I'll make a motion, we take a two minute break.
Two or five?
Two.
Want me to run and print?
I said five, but John said two.
I'm going to run and print this stuff.
Yeah, let's give, make it three.
Okay, two and a half. All right, so we're back from a brief break. Next item on our agenda is the MBTA community zoning requirements and next steps. So this is something we discussed at our last agenda with the understanding that we were going to, we really didn't have a whole lot of information, that we were going to talk about it again tonight.
So I spoke with our representative from Old Colony Planning Council, we are receiving technical assistance from them to get this off the ground. Apparently, there is no option for opting out that seems viable at this point in time. And in order for them to help us with the next required step, they're going to need to know in relatively short order where we think we could potentially zone for this type of housing allotment in the future. So we wouldn't be doing the zoning itself right now, that would be like next year's town meeting. But we do have to provide a location, so they've provided us with a map. And what I would propose, I've been talking with Alan Wheelock and Anne Subaluski in their capacities as bylaw review and planning board. I think if you could authorize me to put together a small group of us internally to work with the person from Old Colony Planning Council and at least complete this preliminary step, get something very general on paper so that we're in compliance. I think that that's the best way to move forward, because they need, Old Colony would need basically a say so from us of a potential location for this type of zoning overlay, probably by like town meeting time. The person who's working on it is leaving them at the end of May, which is unfortunate.
Very unfortunate.
So they need to have this wrapped. And it wouldn't be etched in stone, it's not the language for the zoning overlay itself, it's simply getting a location on paper.
Would you come back with one location or a couple of locations?
I think ideally maybe just one, just so we can check this off the list and move forward. You could always do more in the future, like when it got time to go to town meeting next year, to actually have the overlay district created and implemented. At that point, it would give us an entire year for bylaw review to look at it, some of our other boards and committees, and maybe say, you know, okay, it makes sense, if we're doing it as an overlay, maybe there are more than one location in town that it would make sense.
So if you picked one and later on you wanted to change it, can you do that?
I would think so, I mean, this is such a preliminary stage in the process, but it, it seems like, like I was asking, like, well, what if we needed an extension? And it's like, no, like, there's no opportunity for that. Even on completing this first step, because to me, it seems a little silly if we identify a location that, you want it to mean something, you don't want to pick just some arbitrary location just to check off a box, but apparently, they do need to know. Like I said, in short order, I mean, the person who's assisting us with this, she's a fantastic resource with all things housing related, but she's leaving there at the end of May and has to enter in whatever spot we identify in town. She then needs to plug in like actual parcel IDs, there's a lot of specific information that she has to do the legwork on. And apparently, there's some, I'm not that well versed in this, I just know like the very top layer of it, but I guess there's this compliance model with the state that needs to be filled in.
My, my concern is, whatever we pick is not going to be town owned, we don't have enough land ourselves to do it.
Correct, and it seems odd, there is an odd component to saying, oh, we're going to potentially in the future rezone or create an overlay over other people's property.
Exactly.
There would be a public process for that, and obviously, those people would all be notified. I think that this is very conceptual, this is just, hey, if you had to create a zoning overlay that facilitates multiple housing units, where in your town would make sense to do that? And ideally, they want to see it close to the train station, but that's not really super applicable. It's not. I mean, the only thing that came to mind for me was maybe over towards like the interchange with 44 and Spring Street, like Cisco, like the industrial area, maybe that's a safe bet if it's just the industrial.
On either side of the highway, yeah.
And that way, you're not suggesting private residential parcels.
That certainly would.
Keep it just to the industrial, maybe?
Yeah, it would fly better, that's for sure.
I, I don't know, they're putting us in a, it's just timing wise, I, I know we've known about this for a while, but as far as finding out we got the technical assistance and then getting this off the ground, I mean, it's not like we've been sitting on this for any amount of time, it's just.
It really.
It's moving really fast, and I don't feel like our town, where we have no municipal sewer or water, just that alone, I don't, I don't know that it makes it. It's hard to fit us into the mold that they want us to fit into.
And they're not being flexible at all.
And I don't think it's that, you know, I think everybody here supports the creation of, of housing and certainly affordable housing, whether age qualified or not. It's not about creating housing, it's the density that they're looking for and having to turn this around in such a short amount of time. I don't know, it's, it's putting us in a predicament, but I don't know if maybe we'd be better taking a safe approach and just identifying the preexisting industrial and saying, well, yeah, we could put an overlay there. I mean, you're not, it's not a mandate to build, it's a mandate to zone. So even if you picked a spot that realistically, somebody may not be interested in doing that type of project, but again, that seems strange, like we're going to do that just to check a box and say that we're.
Do we own land, industrial land?
No.
No, it's all private.
Okay.
There's no place in town we own big enough.
But there, there's no, this legislation doesn't require this be town owned land, it's just a district where.
Just an overlay, but to adopt the overlay, like you'd have to put all legal language to it and everything, and that would be a very public process with public input. That would go through two public hearing processes, it would go before the planning board, it would go to town meeting, so it's not like that the zoning in and of itself would not get adopted without public input and vote. But then I wonder what happens there, and no one's really answered that for me, I said, well, what if we go through this exercise so we stay in compliance, and then next year, we go to town meeting with an overlay and the people vote no? Like, what happens in your town if town meeting says no?
Which I think is one of the many issues on this legislation that's really flawed and that kind of is evolving. We had 10 days ago or so, an opinion from the state attorney general that there would be more consequences to towns that didn't do this beyond lack of grants or potentially losing grants. This legislation has such a good purpose in mind and really envisioned housing very close to train stations so people could walk to them. For a town like Plumton that just happens to be next door, it doesn't work very well. And for a little tiny town without infrastructure, with the school system, that probably would just be wrecked if we added 30 or 40 or 50 more kids, this one's really, really hard. And I, I, I know there are towns that are deciding not to do this, and I think we have to take this first step, but I think the bigger level of is, could it be that the consequences of not doing this are, are, are less than, than, or the consequences of doing this wouldn't stop us from not doing it? I mean, I, I totally agree with you, I think the first step of putting together a small group and moving ahead, but I think this is open in the big thinking on what is ultimately going to be the best way to achieve the goal we want to achieve.
I, I support the idea of a committee, but I, rather than just getting to an endpoint and then giving it to us, there needs to be input along the way.
I agree.
Because I feel like.
Well, we don't have a lot of time for input.
No, but this, if we identify something and we can't change it later, that would.
That's problematic.
Well, and can they legally force us to do this?
Well, and I think that's the piece that's a really interesting question and.
If we don't have town owned property, we can't speak for other people's property.
Well, and I.
We can't even make a commitment for our own property.
No, we, we make zoning regulations, whether it's residential agriculture versus industrial, I mean, that's.
It is the attraction of, of if we go ahead with this, of zoning down toward the industrial area that, so that residents are the least affected possible. I mean, this legislation is so blind to a little tiny town that has a lot of wetlands, that has no infrastructure, it just, it's patently unfair.
It's all that, but it's not aimed at us, you know, it's aimed at the Foxboroughs.
Yeah, but we're the fallout.
Right, but we have to live within it.
And, and we're the consequence of it, and, and that's the piece that I think our state representatives and Senator understand that this just isn't fair at this point.
I did happen to have a conversation with Kathy Lanatra when she was doing her library tour, and she made a comment that this is really, you, you really don't have an option, you need to do it.
Yeah, and that's just.
And this conversation came up last week with.
Susan Moran?
Right.
Yeah.
Susan Moran as well, Senator Susan Moran.
I think we should get on with the committee, but, you know, give us a chance to input, whether it's just you talking to us individually or whatever.
So I'm, I'm glad to make a motion.
Okay.
So I make a motion that Liz, we authorize Liz to put together a small group to work with Old Colony Planning Council on the first step of envisioning a zoning district to comply with MBTA ordinances.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I just wonder if we too should reach out to a copula in a page on this.
Want me to?
Yeah, and see if there's anything, any wiggle room here for establishing some type of criteria for towns under a certain population.
Well, I had wondered even about getting an extension on even this first step, I mean, the individual from OCPC who is assigned to us, she's fantastic with all things housing, but I think we're being sped up because that's who's assigned to us, and I don't know, like, I, I feel like we should have.
When's it actually due?
I think June 30th.
Okay.
But I think her last day is like June 2nd and.
Right.
Yeah, so I think we're kind of a casualty of that as well. So I don't know, like even, even an extension beyond that, I mean, we're a little tiny town, and that was what I put in our application for the technical assistance. I said, we don't have a professional planner on staff.
Right.
Or people to do this on the day to day, but I was told no, that that doesn't count as extenuating circumstances, and this is just the first step, it's conceptual. We just don't want to get locked into something later.
Exactly.
Because we thought we had to rush.
Exactly.
But if we don't get it to her in time to fill in all the information and do the legwork before she leaves, she basically said, no, you guys are done, like, we're out of the process at that point. So I don't want to get stuck and we don't know how to use this compliance model.
There's anybody else there that could fill in for her, and, I mean, we only get another 30 days.
Right.
It's still a rush job, this whole, this whole thing.
It is.
But I just wonder if they're overstepping the Attorney General, if they really don't have the authority through this legislation to force us to do it for, because it just doesn't make sense for us. We're being put in a position that is, it's just not attainable for the town. And it's just us checking a box so that we can, because they're holding this money over our head, that if we don't do it, we're going to be out grant money, we're going to be out public works money, and that's really not fair.
The part that I found alarming was that there could be other consequences beyond, like even the grant funding, you could make a judgment call if you felt like that funding was applicable to us or not anyway. But the fact that there could be other penalties imposed.
Just seems like a lot of threats.
I think we want to be very careful that we don't, I think, I agree with everything you say, but I think.
I think we want to be in compliance at least now.
They don't want any town walking away and saying, you know, and there's about three or four that have already said, I'm not sure Halifax has agreed to even fill it out.
Oh, they're pretty upset about it.
Right.
They are, Middleborough is.
Middleborough said no, right?
I wouldn't be a bit surprised if some of these towns joined together and tried to fight this, because it's not fair.
Let's, let's at least try to see if we can fill it out. I, I would be opposed to saying, no, we're not going to do it.
No, I think at this point, though, I, I think I just, I'd like to leave that on the table as a possibility, and maybe some of this is just. the table as a possibility, and maybe some of this is just continuing to speak to our legislative people and, and just keep making the case. And in the meantime, moving ahead with compliance, knowing that we're not committed to anything yet, and push will come to shove next year at town meeting.
Yeah, well, okay. All right, so you made the motion. You had a question, Deb?
Yeah. I'm worried that if you put something down in favor and say, okay, we'll pay these parcels and include those in, and it is private property, is that the first step to eminent domain? Could they make us...
That's an interesting point.
I think it gets to a constitutional issue pretty quickly, and I, that's why I think this is an evolving thing.
Yes, that's all.
Well, what if we limited it to town property, and we said, this is all, this is what we have? We've got virtually nothing.
What if we sent them the list of the town-owned parcels, like the three or four that we had looked at, John?
What, like on Center Street and...
Like Old Brook Street and Center Street.
Few people here and a few people there.
Yeah, yeah, I mean...
What if we send that and we say, these are the only town-owned, like we're not comfortable with private?
I think you're playing with fire if you start doing something like that.
I don't know, but what if we, if this does turn into them taking parcels by eminent domain for this purpose?
Think about that, that they wouldn't be doing it because of Plimpton, they'd be doing it because of large towns that didn't comply, maybe Middleborough, because they got an awful lot of land.
Yeah, they do, and they have a station.
They have the Middleborough-Lakeville line, it's right on the, I think it's actually in Lakeville possibly, but it's like right near the line.
We, you're the committee.
Yeah. You guys, you guys figure it out, you guys figure it out.
It's above our pay grade.
We'll report back.
Yeah. Come up with something really crappy. All right, so we have a motion, and I seconded it, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that's the MBTA. All right, so warrants paid, I think...
Warrants paid were $30,073.34, and the bulk of this was for Habib and Associates for their work on the Old Town House roof bidding.
Great, thank you, Liz.
Did you ever check whether we really have to do this warrant paid each time?
So it was part of the, I can check currently, I know at one point, it was part of the Municipal Modernization Act, and it's, it's meant to save time so that you just get, like you vote.
Because we used to go through the whole stupid thing, every warrant.
Sometimes we do $6,000, you know, as if that was the month's expense. It's ridiculous.
I know, it's kind of crazy.
Anyways.
All right, Liz, do you have an update for us?
So just been busy with all the town meeting prep and the budgets and the warrants. We do have some correspondence items, though. We have a request for use of town property, and this is from the Plimpton Garden Club, and this is for the plants and a bake sale as well on the Town Green on May 20th, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
And that's Election Day?
Uh, yes.
Oh, Election Day, yes.
Yes, and the fire chief has already signed off on this, so if you want to vote it and just require that the other department heads, assuming that they're all set.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the Garden Club to do their annual plant and bake sale on the Election Day at the, on the Town Green. That's where they do this, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, from 8:00 to 1:00 on May 20th, provided they get all the necessary signatures. All right, and second?
And this was the Garden Club?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Someone just wants to sign the bottom, just one is fine. And then we have a vote required, this is for Old Colony Elder Services, and this is to continue Dottie Martell's nomination for the town of Plimpton, and this would be for July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2024, again, for Dottie Martell to continue serving as our nominee to Old Colony Elder Services.
Yeah, she's done this, and she's willing to keep doing it, so...
Which is wonderful. All right, so I'll make a motion that we, is this nominating her?
Yes.
Nominating Dottie Martell to represent the town of Plimpton on Old Colony Planning Council Elder Services effective July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2024.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that concludes correspondence.
All right, nothing for the auditing contract?
Um, yes, I just wanted to make sure on that one, actually, that, that was the one I sent you for Lynch and Marini. I wanted to make sure that you were comfortable with the three years. I'm comfortable with that, but I know we had been doing one-year contracts with them.
It says FY '23, aren't we in FY '23?
We are, but they're always a year behind, so right now, they're doing the FY '22 audit.
Yeah, they wait for everything to close before they start.
I'm comfortable with that because I feel like that would bring us to a good spot, where we're already in '23 now, so next fiscal, they would start the '23 audit. I don't think it's unreasonable to keep them on board for those three years, especially where they helped us get things off the ground with our new financial staff. That said, I think after that point, it might be worth exploring options.
Department of Revenue made a recommendation that we change audits.
Right.
I agree with you right now.
I'm sure it's good to switch it up sometimes to just a different set of eyes. If you're comfortable approving that, though, that would be great if we can solidify that.
All right, I'll make a motion that we award the contract for auditing services for Lynch and Marini for FY '23 through FY '25.
Second.
We'll call, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item is the minutes, so we've got minutes from 3:27, 4:10, and 4:15. Did you both get a chance to read them?
Yeah, I didn't get the, to look at the, I guess they were fixed up a little.
Yeah, it was, they were, yeah, there were a couple of issues in the beginning.
I'm fine.
Okay, are you, did you have any additional changes to any of those minutes?
I do not.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes from March 27, April 10, and April 15 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Liz, did you get a note from me about the gardens over here?
Yes, I will take care of that.
All right, so our next meeting will be 5:08, and then followed by 5:22, so we'll finish things up with raves.
Are we going to, we usually at least put up a notice just before town meeting in case something comes up last minute?
Oh, yeah, when is it, town, the, is 5:22?
May 17 is town meeting.
May 17 is town meeting.
Okay.
So do you want me to post a meeting for 6:30?
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect, that sounds great, Liz, okay.
On the 17th.
Okay. All right, well, I'll go first. My rave is Liz and the financial team and how, what a pleasure it was to go through the warrant this time. Oh, my gosh, like night and day to, to years past. Oh, my gosh, where you guys had really done your diligence on these articles and, and worked with the necessary parties to, to make sure you had all the information, and so that good decisions could be made and that we could, you know, work through this seamlessly, so thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
It's a lot of work.
It is, it is. It's a good process, though, town government at work.
I, I would echo that and, and appreciate how the process is evolving and getting more and more polished each year, and that has a lot to do with Liz, and I appreciate that. My rave is a single word, spring.
Yay!
So my rave is for the all the volunteers who turned out for Cleanup Day. Every road except 58 and 106 was lined up well, so if you go around...
It does look good.
It does.
They did a really nice job.
Yeah, so...
And they had a nice day cleaning up, too.
It was, it was a perfect day for doing it, yeah.
It wasn't too hot, so, yeah, yeah, absolutely, well done.
Lot of, lot of participants, a lot of shout-outs to the people who are running at, you know, Berdys and, you know, the various people, they did a great job.
Yeah, and then Highway goes around and picks it all up, too?
Yeah, though Dave was coming around with his truck and picking it up, too.
Oh, was he, picking it up, too?
Yeah, so it was nice.
Anything else?
I'll save them for next time.
Okay, yeah, you usually don't have one, you usually have multiples.
I have multiples, I do have, I do have. We have an opportunity coming up with the Girl Scouts, that the gardens are going to be recreated out here, and one of the leaders, I believe it's her brother, works for, he's a vendor for this old house, and he brought them in, and they are going to, they've agreed, they've confirmed that they will landscape the gardens and build them, so you'll be hearing more about that. We're going to, May 6, the Girl Scout leaders will be coming to the library to talk about it, so...
Very exciting.
Very exciting, yeah.
Very good.
And we'll be filmed and all that, so...
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah.
That's very nice. All right, so that's all we've got for tonight, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night!